...purpose of the regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council.
Steve, you're on mute.
The Governor of the State of Illinois is... The Governor of the State of Illinois?
I can hear you now.
The Governor of the State of Illinois has declared a gubernatorial disaster proclamation in response to the COVID-19 outbreak, restricting individuals to gatherings of 50 persons or less, and all of the city of Elmhurst is covered by this disaster. In light of the ongoing COVID outbreak, the Mayor of the City of Elmhurst has determined that an in-person meeting for March 1st, 2021, may not be practical or prudent in light of the disaster. All of the aldermen of the City Council participating in the March 1st, 2021 City Council meeting, wherever their physical location shall be verified and determined, they can hear one another and can hear all discussion and testimony during the meeting. We are going to do that now, and I will do that in order that they appear on my screen. I'm going to start with Mike Capp over there in public comment. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Mike Brennan.
I can hear you.
Don Starino.
I can hear you.
If you're not speaking, I would ask that you mute. We got a couple folks who are renegades at this point. Mike Brennan. Elaine Leavitts, can you hear me?
Yes.
Clerk Tamer?
Yes, I can hear you.
Alderman Doiter?
I can hear you.
Alderman Toledo?
Yes, I can hear you.
Alderman Hanquest?
I can hear you, Mayor. Thanks.
Alderman Mulliner?
I can hear you.
Alderman Kennedy?
Here, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Cahill?
I can hear you, Mayor.
Alderman Park?
I can hear you, Mayor.
Alderman Levin?
I can hear you.
Alderman Hill?
I can hear you, Mayor.
Alderman Dunn?
I can hear.
Alderman Veremis?
I can hear you.
City Manager?
I can hear you.
Alderman Palomsky?
I can hear you.
Cassandra Schreff?
Yes, I can hear you.
Alderman Bram?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, with that out of the way, I'm going to ask that you all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Clerk Tamer, please call the roll.
Cahill?
Here.
Toledo?
Here.
Park?
Here.
Levin?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Hanquest?
Here.
Brennan?
Here.
Mulliner?
Here.
Here.
Doiter?
Here.
Veremis?
Here.
Hill?
Here.
Dunn?
Here.
Bram?
Here.
Palomsky?
Here.
14 present, zero absent.
14 present, zero absent. We have a quorum. We are in session. On to Agenda Item 2, receipt of written communications from the public. At this time, is there anybody in the audience here in council chambers who has any written communications they wish to submit at this time? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing none, I'm going to ask Mr. Capp, is there anybody in our public comment access that has any written communications they wish to submit at this time?
No, they do not.
Seeing none in either location, that concludes Agenda Item 2, receipt of written communications from the public. On to public forum, Agenda Item 3. This is an opportunity for anybody in the audience, next door in our annex, or on the phone, to provide public comments should they so choose on any item. We ask that they direct their comments to the Chair. That's me. Out of respect for work that we have to get done here this evening and respect for other folks that may want to speak, we ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. We'll be keeping time. If you go over three minutes, I'll give you a gentle reminder and ask you to wrap up. We do ask you to identify yourselves as we are recording this meeting. Address is optional. Clerk Tamer, do we have anybody who signed up to speak this evening?
Yes, Mayor. We have a couple people that have signed up. First one is Claude Pagash.
Mr. Capp, I think I spotted Mr. Pagash in there earlier. If you could bring him to the microphone, that'd be great.
Good evening, all.
We can hear you. Go ahead.
Good evening, all. My name is Claude Pagash, Allevon, 566 West Gladys. I started coming to the council meetings some years ago. I somewhat tapered off because of circumstances. But during that period of time, I seen a change in the council. When I first came, there were council members, not all, who questioned what was on the agenda. Over time, that has changed radically. 13 to 1 votes are not necessarily how government should run. That means I have 13 people that have no opinion but yes or no. That's a shame. You all represent a group of people. Not all the same people, and it is hard to believe that the people they elect have one opinion. Like I said, when I first started, there were members that questioned the agenda. I don't know who writes the agenda. I don't know who prepares it. But to accept it on all counts, every time you come to a meeting and have no questions, forget about the executive session. It's hard to believe that if 13 people that have no opinion at all, then why hold the office? There's an election coming up. You all have an opportunity, I guess, or some of you. We've got a new mayor coming in. I would like to see the council change. Not just say, hmm, 13 to 1, 14, have no opinion. Then do you really represent the people that vote you into the office that you hold? You all work somewhere. You're asking your opinion. You just say, hmm, I'll go along with anybody? Because that's the way the council seems to be operating. For all of you that are running and those that have decided not to run, I wish you all well. But I'd like to see the council change to represent the people that vote them in, to have an opinion. It extends a council meeting, there's no doubt about it. But just to say yes and no? Can't do that for a whole couple of years, three years, four years. We had a member like that. Always voted yes, majority, and always voted no, it's majority. But they have people that we elect question what's on that agenda. You don't write it.
Mr. Pagash, you have your three minutes. I'd ask you to wrap up your comments, please.
Well, let's put it this way. Mayor, talk to a few people. You know what they're saying? There's no need to come out to vote for the City Council. That, unfortunately, is a reflection of what? So for those that are running, we should have best, if you can't get the people in your ward to come out to vote, to say commentary on the people.
Clerk Tamer, do we have someone else?
We have Bob Janis.
Mike, is Mr. Janis with you or is he online?
Right here. How you doing?
Mr. Janis, good. Mr. Janis, good to see you. The floor is yours.
Cool. I wasn't planning on showing up. I've just, you know, I've been Elmhurst resident for 38 years now. You know, I've been, never really voted for anybody at a local level before. Actually, I've seen the mayor, I didn't recognize him. None personal. I mean, I worked, I worked 15 days, sold the spread, it's all, okay, you've all done that. My thing is, when's the endgame? I mean, we're all grown adults, men, women, and we take our, our direction from others, pros. But it just seems like, the more I look into it, and, I mean, this isn't just me, it's, I don't have like credentials, but other, a lot of people do. They may not get the FaceTime like everyone else does, but, you know, look, I mean, the mayor mentioned something about a disaster or something. I mean, I just looked at DuPage County, there's zero cases in DuPage. So now we keep on enforcing more infringement and other, you know, random law-abiding tax citizens, and, you know, that's personal, personal information, like temperature checks. I mean, you lose your medical, you lose your control of your own self. I just seem, it just seems like, public medical information shouldn't be public. Everyone needs to do their best to take care of each other, look out after each other, but the fact that it's just, it's just noise. There's no clear direction. So I drive, I work through all this. I work through March, I'm in sales, liquor sales. And, you know, I was at the stores where there's no bread, no water, but we're all supposed to look out for each other, to wear masks. No one really looked out for each other when, you know, when it really came down to food and water, right? We gotta not go crazy, let's be a little more, try to understand things a little better. I don't know much time, I'll wrap it up. But all I'm saying is that I think for the Elmhurst social media, whoever covers social media, put more positive information out there. It's not as deadly as they say it is. A gentleman that just spoke, mentioned, you know, 500,000 people died. Well, it's on record that CDC says that only 6% of those numbers are accurate, and the other ones are comorbidities. Now, that's a personal thing, and people, it's not good to share personal information to the public, because you could offend people like that, and that's not what I'm trying to do. Actually, my grandma had a stroke. She's been bedridden since a week after COVID hit. She's been bedridden. While I was working, taking care of my grandma, myself, my mom, no social distance, no, hey, keep your, you know, hug them with a plastic wrap. No. I mean, you just got to sterilize their utensils, and it's common sense. Cough, down and away. We don't need to be muzzled, triple masked, quadrupled. That's a different story. But all I'm saying is that, everything that they're saying, I'm a little bit proof that I could contradict that. What time is it? Okay. That's, that's, that's all I got to say. You know, I want, everyone's doing their part. You know, I drive five minutes away from work, I find it a real nuisance when I get caught by a red light. Took a lot of time today to wait and talk to you guys, because it really bothered me, because I need some, I need some end results, because a lot of people are suffering, and a lot of people are hurting. A lot of people that dictate orders haven't lost money. People are hurting out there. So, and I see it all over the place. You're either Winnebago County, Sycamore, Yorkville, I'm all over the place. I lost respect for the governor when he released 4,000 criminals in my work area. So you don't keep the public safe by releasing people, you know, that have no right to be, you know, what dumb, you know, crime, do the time. So, all I got to say.
Thank you.
Who agrees? Give me a thumbs up or a thumbs down, anybody.
It's a public forum, sir, not a Q and A, but I look forward to following up with you after the meeting.
Okay, cool. Michael Brown, and I think you're, you're in my district, and I think Danny, Danny Palmas, I reached him. Take care.
Thank you. Clerk Tamer, anyone else for public comment?
That's it, Mayor.
Mr. Capp, anyone else in there who didn't sign up who would like to have the chance to speak?
No, there is not. There is no one on the phone either.
Jim, do we have to check this phone or are we good? Okay. All right. So we've had public comment, both those who signed up and anybody who wanted to sign up. And that concludes public comment for this evening. On to Agenda Item 4. Personally, what I believe is going to be the best part of our agenda tonight. I'm going to ask Susan and Robert to meet me over right where Mike Stenson is, and I'll be down there in just a minute.
Susan, you helping Mike?
Yeah. Just like he needs it.
Okay.
Is that my hook going to be hot?
We'll just do it through.
Through the computer, that's what I mean.
Mike Brennan, give me a thumbs up if you can hear me. There you go.
Okay. I invited Susan Rose up here, and she's here with her husband, Robyn. So good to see both of you.
Thank you.
I love the matching gloves, and just perfect. I'd expect nothing less. So, I thought a lot about what I was going to say tonight, and I'm going to try not to make it all about me, but this is kind of a interesting set of events, the way things are woven in to this award. So we've got a award that I give out. It's a mayor's award. It's called the Daryl Whistler Special Service Recognition Award. And this is an award that I created, and the mayor determines who gets it. This is a award that I created really to honor Daryl Whistler. So many of you know who Daryl Whistler was. Daryl was, my running line about Daryl was, Daryl Whistler was on the Zoning and Planning Commission longer than I've been on this earth. He joined the Zoning and Planning Commission back in 1967. I'll let you guys do the math. Anyway, Daryl passed away after 50-plus years of service, and I thought one of the least things that we could do to honor his legacy was maybe select somebody in our... But Daryl, and it's not an easy award for me to give out, because there's so many deserving people. But I'm very happy to be here tonight with Susan. And like I said, this is kind of a big deal, but, and there's a lot of little facets to it. One of them would be that this is actually, this specific award, I'm supposed to give it out every year, but this was actually the first thing that hit home here at City Hall when COVID was real. This was last March, we were supposed to have our Commissioners' Event, and I will apologize to Susan and her family, because I waited until 5 o'clock the day of the event to cancel it. And I had been on the phone, I was at City Hall, I'd been on the phone with the hospital, I'd been on the phone with doctors, lawyers, and City Manager and I, and ultimately I had to pull the trigger and cancel this event. So I apologize that it's taken so long for you to get this deserved award. But it's really, was the beginning of COVID for us. So a little bit about Susan, and personally what I think she means to me, but also the City of Elmhurst. I had the unfortunate distinction of being the person who got their last choice of committees when I became a rookie alderman, which was supposed to be kind of private, but Tom Markucci announced to everybody the night he was assigning us to committees, which I appreciate. But never did I know how fortuitous that would be, because if you see the way we're lined up here, but actually it doesn't really work tonight, because half of us are social distance. But the way we sit up on the dais is the low man on the totem pole on finance sits next to the smartest person in the room on DP and Z. And I didn't know Susan at the time, but I was so fortunate and so thankful for Tom for basically putting me in last place. Before I ran for office, I had two political mentors. One was my stepfather, Gene Hoffman, who's a wonderful man, and the other was Tom Markucci, who from afar always seemed like a guy who had it together and ran a pretty good city. But once I became an elected official, I can tell you who my political mentor was when it came to getting the job done, and it was Susan Rose. Susan, I learned so much from Susan that I, well, this speech would be twice as long as it already is, if I talked about how much I learned from Susan. But I'm ever grateful, not only did I sit next to her up on the dais, I was fortunate enough to serve with her on committee after that. And I learned from her, and I learn to this day from her. One of the things I'll always remember, she said, and it's so profound and in simplicity, but I use it, oh, I'd say maybe once a week, maybe once every other week in this job, is rushed policy is bad policy. I learned that from Susan Rose. And I remember one time, I can't even remember what it was, something very simple, but we jammed something through, and about two weeks later, we got another piece of information that just made it worthless. And all I could think about is how right Susan was. And then Susan took a break from politics for a little while, and I had an opportunity about three or four years after that to, I heard that Susan might be interested in being on the Zoning and Planning Commission. And I thought, boy, I even said this to Jim Grabowski, because I was thinking about how I was going to fill this slot, and I said, and then I found out that Susan Rose was interested. And I said to Jim Grabowski, I said, there's 44,000 people in town, and if I had to pick the person most qualified to fill this seat, it would be Susan Rose. I'm so excited that she's decided to come back and help us in this role. And of course, in a very short amount of time, not only did Susan help out and support Daryl at the end of his reign, but here we are today, and Susan is the Chairman of the Zoning and Planning Commission. And before I ask Susan to come up, I will say one last thing that I learned from Susan, is there was nobody, and I mean, nobody better who I have served with in my 14 years as an elected official. There was nobody who was better during either a heated or contentious debate or discussion to draw us back into focus. If ever we got on track, you could always count on Susan to raise her hand or be recognized in a meeting and say, okay, that's a good point, even when someone was being a little difficult, and say, but let's remind ourselves why we're here. In chapter and verse, she would explain it, and would completely diffuse the room. It would completely put us all back on target, and she makes meetings productive. I can't think of anybody else better to serve on the zoning and planning and be Chairman, and I hope that she will go for 51 years and break Daryl's record. With that having, and on top of that, personally, I got to know Susan and Robert, and there's no more loving couple than the two of them. When they're not apart and they speak about each other, I said this to Jim Grabowski today, when I talk to Susan Rose and she talks about Robert, it's like she's a college kid and she's on her third date, she can't wait to talk about him, and they feel that way about each other. So there's just so many wonderful things I could say about the two of them. I didn't really prepare much for this speech, because I knew it would come from the heart. And everything I said, and to her family who is here, thank you for sharing this treasure with us. She is, she is wonderful. She is one of the things that I will miss in Elmhurst. She's, I talk about the crown jewels in Elmhurst, here's one of them right here. So, ladies and gentlemen, Susan Rose. All right, so I'm going to show this awesome thing, and then you got, someone's got to put it back in here. But this thing, look at this amazing, this like weighs like 20 pounds. This thing is so awesome. Susan, I'm going to let you look at it, and then I will hand it to somebody. So that's your, that's the, that's the award that you're so deserving, and it is, I can't think of anybody better for giving it. Thank you so much. I will take that from you while you speak, if that's okay.
Thank you.
Robert?
Since I'm six feet away from anyone, I think I will take it off so you could hear me. Thank you. Thank you so much. Let me just ask you this. Do you know where you were 30 years ago? The third ward, asking people to vote for me as alderman. I was asking them to trust that I would represent them fairly, honestly, and that I would do the absolute best that I could. And I'll be doggone if they didn't agree with that, and if they didn't vote for me, and vote for me five different times, and thus started my real adventure, my journey in public service in this city of Elmhurst. So in accepting this award, the first people I want to thank are the people of the third ward. And I want to thank them, really, I hope I repaid them. I hope I repaid their trust, and I want to thank them for really trusting me through that whole time. I'd also like to thank former Mayor Tom Markucci for appointing me as Chair of the Development, Planning, and Zoning Committee. I had no idea that I would fall in love with zoning. I was just a social worker, and zoning, it turns out, is something I was absolutely fascinated by, and I was privileged to chair that committee for 16 years. I'd also like to thank Mayor Morley for really having, for trusting me to put me on the zoning commission, and then later on to ask me to be Chair of that, where I could indulge my love of zoning as much as I wanted. So I want to thank him for that. I'll tell you, I'm so very honored to receive this award, named for one of the great gentlemen of this city, which is Daryl Whistler. He showed me that service to this city really should be based on genuine respect. Live in it, and that's what I've tried to do the whole time I've been here. Elmhurst has given me and my family so much, and my family sitting over there has given so much, and I have been proud to be able to give back something to them. So I, this, it's 30 years of this, but I have to tell you, I'm very proud and privileged that I've been able to do that. Finally, really, I do want to thank my husband, who's put up with many Monday nights while I was an alderman, and now many Tuesday nights of really pretty sketchy dinners, pretty late, cold, put up with all of them. But I also want to thank him for his absolute unwavering support of me in all of the crazy things that I do. So I really want to thank him for that, and I want to thank the city and the mayor for all of this. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Robert, hold it. You're not required to stay, you know that. All right, they're gonna take advantage of that, we're gonna let them clear out. Well, that's certainly a tough act to follow, I'd hate to follow that. That having been said, I want to let council know and the city of Elmhurst residents that one of our most recent stormwater projects, the Sailor Swain Valet Stormwater Improvement Project, has been selected as the winner of the APWA Chicago Metro Chapters Project of the Year Award in the category of environment. Due to COVID restrictions, we're not really sure when the official award's gonna happen, when the presentation's gonna happen, but it's, it's an event that, it's an event, it's an award that we're very proud of. We've won numerous awards for our stormwater projects, but I think it's appropriate when we do ask Stan, our new Public Works Director, to do what he can to follow that, and please fill us in on our most recent award. Thank you, Stan.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a few details to kind of follow up on Mayor's comments. This project was recognized by the Chicago Chapter of the American Public Works Association, which essentially consists of all of the Chicagoland and Northeast Illinois area. And it also, by virtue of the city being recognized at that level, means that the chapter will present this project as part of the American Public Works Association National Award Competition later this year. So there's, there's an opportunity to be recognized nationally for this. This project was about a $4.7 million stormwater improvement project that was constructed under a design-build agreement. It added about 7.3 acre feet of underground stormwater storage. I think reduced flooding for almost 100 properties in the city. And that was the largest single number of homes under one project that were, received flood protection as, as part of the city's stormwater improvement efforts that began about five or six years ago. The other thing that I really wanted to add in, in myself learning about this project was that, to me, it was a really great example of what the city can achieve when everyone works together. This was a project that involved literally, obviously, all, all levels of the city working together in approving the funding, approving the contract, almost all of the operating departments within the city had some role in making this happen. So this really was a great example of teamwork throughout the whole, whole organization to make this happen, and it's, it's, it's my pleasure to be able to provide a little bit of further information about that tonight. So thank you.
Thank you, Stan. Okay, on to agenda item five, we have a presentation. Cassandra Schreff, our communications director, is in her office, and she is gonna walk us through the Elmhurst Connect, which I think most of us have on our phone right now, some of the electeds? Okay. Cassandra, the floor is yours.
Hey, great, thank you, I'm gonna share my screen here, just a minute. Okay, can everyone see my screen? Great. Okay, so thanks for your time this evening. I'd like to introduce you to the city's newly launched web and mobile app reporting system that we're calling Elmhurst Connect. City staff has worked on this project for quite some time, and we are now ready for the public.
Cassandra, hold on one second. Hold on one second, Cassandra.
I just want to be sure that if anybody has come to City Hall to attend the meeting, they should be able to hear and see the presentation.
And Mr. Kopp, is this presentation up on your screen? Mike Kopp?
Yes, we, we can hear it and see it.
Okay, thank you. So anybody in the audience, I mean, you're more than welcome to watch us, I know it's stimulating, but if you want to hear the presentation, like literally across the hall, there's seats and a big screen TV, just as Alderman Plomsky pointed out, if you want to see it, because I know we're recording, because of COVID, it's a little difficult. But if you want to see what we're watching, it's literally across the hall, but you're more than welcome to stay here as well, so.
I should also mention that the presentation, there's a link to the presentation if you go to elmhurst.org/servicerequest, so you can see it there too. Okay, so I'd like to introduce you to the city's newly launched web and mobile app reporting system called Elmhurst Connect. City staff has been working on this project for quite some time, and we're ready to make it public, ready for the public to be, begin submitting their service requests using this system. This system will allow the community to quickly report common service or informational requests to city departments. They can then see their requests move through the process of completion while receiving status updates on that, that request. This evening, I will be demonstrating how to submit a service request through the mobile app, online and through a tablet device. So the mobile app can be downloaded on an Android, Android or iOS device. If you are using the search tool here, you would search for Elmhurst Connect in, in either the Apple or Google Play Store, and you can use it to download the, the app. Keywords like city of Elmhurst or Elmhurst will also get you to this, this icon where you can download. Creating an account is strongly recommended in order to receive feedback from city staff on your service request. So if you do not give us your email address, we are not able to communicate back and forth with you on your service request. There are some service requests that can be named, that can be created anonymously. For example, something like a street light out or a pothole, reporting a pothole, those all can be done anonymously, but something like a car seat inspection or a garage tow to replacement, we would need your information, so you would need to create an account and and give us that information, so we're able to contact you if we have any further questions. When you do download the app, it will ask, it will ask you if we could send you notifications, pop-up notifications. I would suggest that you allow this. That's when your request is going through the process, process of completion, if you do allow this, then pop-ups, pop-up notifications will be sent through your mobile device. If you don't allow it, that's fine, you would get these notifications through your email if it's provided. Okay, so once you download the app to your phone, you'll get to a screen that looks something like this. In the top right, there's a white little telephone icon. This will allow you to quickly call City's Hall main number by just clicking on the, the white telephone. Towards the bottom left, you'll see news and announcements. This will take you to the city's website, where you can see all the latest news and announcements. Quick links just has a highlighted area within the app that highlights certain sections of our website that we know that our community members are going to quite often. You can also get to our online payment section of our website by clicking on the icon on the right. But today, we'll focus on the request section of the app, which is the main functionality of the app. So when you click on this middle request button, you'll get to these three options, and the main thing you'll want to do is click Create a Request. And then you'll get to this screen here, which has a few different fields that you'll have to fill out. And the very first thing that's, that's in bold right here is Select a Report Type. So the first thing you'll have to do is choose the, the type of report that you'd like to make to the city. So this is our list, these are lists of report types. Some of these that have the arrow here have subcategories. So I think when you first download the app, a good thing to do would be to look through all these service requests, so you're familiar with the different sections and, and how to report those different, what, what's available to, to report. Not every type of report is available through this app, through the system. We really tried to focus on request types that were not urgent, that need, did not need immediate attention, but, but could, you know, wait 12 to 24 hours or so, so that's what you'll see here. Anything that needs immediate attention, of course, you would call City Hall directly or call 911 if it's an emergency. So once you do choose the request that you, you'd like to report, you do have to click this, this Done button here, once you've made your selection. Okay, so here you can see that, this screenshot that, that I've requested, report a, a pothole as my report type. You'll see these axes on the left, that means that these are required fields, so it's very important that you understand that we do need this, this information, these two red field, and the two red fields. So the second thing you'll have to tell us is where, where is the request? When you're identifying where the request is, you click on the map, not on the red axe, you have to, you have to click inside of the map. So here is what will pop up on your, your mobile device. If you do have location services on, the app will, will identify where you're located. So you can move this cursor if, anywhere you'd like to within city boundaries, and you can also use this little magnifying glass and type in your, the address, if you'd like to do it that way as well. And again, you have to click Done, so that, that this saves your, this saves your location information. And the next required field are Tell Us More Details, so you do have to give us some type of description of, for the service request. So here I said pothole at York and Third Intersection. Some of the requests do have some notes, we are able to give a little bit more information depending on the request. And this one, of course, is if it's something that needs immediate attention, if it's, if it's, you know, dangerous, please call that, that number. You can also add photos, videos or audio. This is not required, but sometimes it can be helpful if you need to further explain, I think it will help support your report type. So if you do, would like to submit that, you can either use your camera and allow the app to take photos with your camera, or if you have a photo stored on your, in your photo library, you can access it here. I found this photo of a pothole, so this is what I'm gonna use.
Cassandra, that pothole was in Villa Park for the rest of...
That was not an Elmhurst, that was, I found that online. But you can see that it attached right here. You can attach a number of files, I think it's up to four files, 100 megabytes total. You can also decide to keep the request confidential. Now confidential is different than anonymous. If you've decided that you wanted to submit anonymously, that means you did not give us any information on who you are, and we're not able to communicate back to you with, with your request type. By keeping it confidential, there is an area in the app where you can see all public requests. So this is useful if there's a street light out, pothole, tree trimming, if you want to see if somebody else has reported this, then it's, it's useful to keep this in public view. Some request types will need to be confidential, and, and the system will override it. So an example of this would be code enforcement request, or some type of request that, with, with information for the police department, a crime tip, for example, that will automatically show confidential. But in some cases, I think it would be helpful to show, show this in public view. Also, I think it's worth noting that if, if you do submit a request, if you're submitting a request, and someone else has already submitted it, this system will send you a pop-up notification to ask you if you'd like to continue with your requests since it's already been made. So after you fill out these required fields, you hit Submit, and you'll get this pop-up message on your right that says, thank you for using Elmhurst Connect, and then you can close your request, or you can see, you can see all of your requests by clicking the button on the left. So here's just an example in my account of, on the left, all the requests that I've placed, and you can see that the one that I just placed or placed today will show up all the way at the top, and it's in Received Status. All of my other requests have been closed. You can see your requests in map view as well, and you can filter it from map view or list view. List view is what you see on the left. And then you can also filter it by the request type, the status, so if I only wanted to see my received or open request types, I can filter it here on the right. So after you've submitted our requests, you, if you, if you've allowed pop-up messages, you will get them through your, your mobile device. If, but you'll also get them emailed to you. So these are some examples of some status updates on my service requests. On the left, it's just a thank you message, we've received your request, staff member will be in touch with you on this request. And then on the right, you can see when I, staff has changed the report type to a different status. Once the report is complete, you'll get an email that says, thank you for your request, how did we do? So this is where you can rate your service for this request. And to rate it, you actually have to choose one of these emojis to rate your experience, and then this right, this message on the right will then pop up, and this is where you can provide and submit comments. So we understand that many people are not interested in downloading apps, there's too many apps, not really wanting to download another, and that's not a problem. You can also submit your service request by going to the city's website and using this, this section right here, Service Request. And you can also get to that section directly by visiting elmhurst.org/servicerequest. When you go to that, that link, you'll go, get to this page where you'll see little prompts, your redirections, and it'll tell you, you can create your request by using this Create button here. View are just different, different service requests that other people have made. FAQs are the same FAQs that are on the city's website, but it's just, you can get to it through this way as well. And then messaging, we do have the capability of sending out messages through the system if you, if you sign up for them. So on a desktop, you'll also be prompted to create an account or create anonymously. And then you'll get to a screen that looks much like what I just showed you on, in the mobile app version, so you'd go through the same process. So if you don't want to download an app, you don't want to use your desktop, you'd much rather use your tablet device or use your mobile device, but go through your, your browser on your mobile device, and that's not an issue either, you just have to save this URL, elmhurstil.citysource.com, and that will take you to a page that looks very similar to what the mobile app looks like. And that's it. So happy to take any questions. Staff is ready to... Staff is ready to um to address any of of the requests that come through the system.
Okay, there we go. Now I can see everybody. So Cassandra stopped sharing her screen. I can see everybody. Uh does anybody have any specific questions for Cassandra with regard to our new mobile app? Alderman Tulluto, you have a question?
A question and a comment. So that I can hear without being so muffled. Can you hear me? Okay, um I just want to thank Cassandra and the Russell City staff team that worked through this. Um I'm very excited to see this um come to fruition rate application. Um I think it coming from a service management background myself, um the amount of taking Elmer's into the next generation of service, the data that we'll get of some of the different types um and frequency of types of service requests will be useful and um we'll have data on how quickly we do respond as a city to our residents when they have an issue. So I think this is just a wonderful step in the right direction. Um my only question is just to clarify if uh, because I would like to, you know, share this with people that live in my ward. Um is this live now so we can begin to promote it and market it aggressively to residents?
It is live. It it has been live for uh a few weeks now. We wanted to make sure that staff um felt comfortable with us going public with it, and and we do feel that we're there at this point. And the first step was to present it to city council, and now we'll begin our marketing plans.
One follow-up, Mayor. And I I thank you, Cassandra, for, you know, making the adding into your description of how to use this that you have to click on the emojis to give the feedback, because I was the user that didn't know how to do that. So thank you. Hopefully, it'll be much more intuitive to most people. Just I'm just not me. Thanks.
Additional questions or comments? Alderman Dunn, you have your hand up.
Yes, thanks. Uh just a uh quick question slash comment. The uh the the group of aldermen uh that uh are on city council, we get a lot of service requests. And we've been getting them for many, many years. Um and we generally forward those to city staff. Um so in essence, we're a bit bit of a middleman, but we uh we follow the progress, we try to follow the progress progress of it, and city staff keeps us informed. And so this tool, I think, is excellent. In in cases where the aldermen are getting um questions or or requests for service, um the 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 resident may not want to fill one of these out. Would we uh take it upon ourselves to fill that out, either the alderman or to um ask city staff to go ahead and fill one out so we can track that better? Is that uh something that we would be doing?
I think that depends on how involved you'd like to be with the follow-through. Um if that's something, if they if they are not interested in submitting, if the resident is not interested in submitting the service request themselves, but you'd like to follow up with them, then you can submit the request. Uh but any any staff member is ready to take those requests and submit them um and put there that residence email and contact information, and then they should be able to see the status updates.
Any additional questions? Oliver Polomski, then I'll go to Alderman Levin.
Thank you, Mayor. This might be easier. Thank you to Cassandra and city staff for putting this together. This is really helpful and allows for a more direct route for residents when they need assistance. Um my questions are around our existing methods for communication. If you look on the city's website, um and you click on how do I, and there there's a whole list, a bulleted list of how to communicate. It's contact my alderman, the mayor, staff, report a concern, sign up for alerts, and sign up for newsletter. I'm curious if um this will be updated and if there'll be some more information about which of these, let's say, subscription services will continue to run or where where there will be any overlap? Or should people plan on using Elmer's Connect instead of any of these? I'm wondering if there's going to be any um clarification or if um Cassandra's able to walk us through any of that yet.
Sure, we did add make a service request on into that section. Um we've tried to delete every um area of the website where you would submit a form, the the old way that we've we've done it. Um I'll I'll look through this again to make sure there's no areas that we've missed. Certain request types, for example, to contact your alderman, uh we did not put in this system. So they would they would continue to submit a form through the website that would go directly to the alderman. Um so this is just for uh really request types um that are non-immediate um and that go directly to staff and the different staff departments, not not to the elected officials. So I will go through this website again, this area of the website again, to make sure we didn't miss anything. Um but then again, when we start marketing it uh a bit more, we'll have tutorial videos. There'll be much more information on how to use how to use this system.
Thank you for that. Um thank you, Mayor. So just a follow-up question then. Thank you. I I don't necessarily see something that would conflict with this, but if somebody has signed up for news alerts, should we um expect that that will continue and that Elmer's Connect will not, you know, somehow evolve to become a a notification system or an alert messaging app?
That's correct. Our e-newsletter, newsflash, um all the ways that we notify the residents um in those ways will remain. This system does have the capability, though, if you do have downloaded the app. Um it's it it's just an additional way that we can communicate to the residents, but we will not be replacing those those types of communication.
Thank you.
Alderman Levin.
Uh thank you, Mayor. Um a couple of things. One is I think it's um noteworthy how far we've come in eight years. I remember we had a flood event uh eight years ago. We didn't. Your first plug, Mayor. Um we didn't know how to contact the residents. We didn't have the tools to get out. Uh even to do a robo-call, we had to go to an outside service. So this is uh another welcome addition to communication tools for our residents. I think it's also important for residents um who don't um want to call City Hall, they don't want to call their alderman. Um they're on the train, they're just sitting, they're doing it in the evening. So this is a great way for them to be able to take it upon themselves. And then it really, I think the last component that's really unique about this is the tracking function. So we as a board will be able to see how quickly and how efficiently we are responding to our residents. And I think for as an alderman, sometimes I feel like uh requests have gotten lost, and I don't not pointing fingers, but it's just the call. I think staff has them coming from so many different places. And here's one place where we can go, residents can go, uh we don't know what's getting taken care of. And then uh we will be able to uh when someone does call us back, we can find out ourselves what the status of the request is. So Cassandra, thank you for your efforts on this. I think this is really one of the most exciting pieces of technology we've had in a long time. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? I don't see uh anyone else. City manager? Oh, Alderman Hill. There you go. Alderman Hill, the floor is yours.
Hi, Cassandra. Um just a quick follow-up question related to what uh Alderman Dunn was referring to in terms of possibly filing requests for others. And I'm wondering, I didn't see this in the interface, but is there a way to file a request on behalf of somebody else, say, in the notes field? Or a way that somebody could get feedback that you're filing on behalf of, or a resident might be filing on behalf of another another resident? Would like to see the feedback?
I was for one email address, one phone number, um so that staff knows exactly who to contact if if um they have any questions about the request. One thing, and I I don't think I mentioned it in the presentation, is that every request type has a unique uh reference code. So and that stays with that request forever, and we keep the we'll keep this data. Um it's our our data. So um if if you were to communicate with with your with a resident and you've said, you know, I've I've submitted, I've submitted this request, uh can you follow up with city staff? And you had that reference number or even their name and address, we can then go in the system and look it up and see what's going on. So unfortunately, right now, only one person can be connected to that report type um so that we know who we need to communicate with. But there are details that that resident will get if they provide us with their contact information, that then we can help um help communicate to you what is going on with that request.
Thank you. Alderman Brennan.
Thank you very much. I'm uh happy to report, Cassandra. I was wondering how to get a new toter. I went on the app into news and right there it was. So it's working already.
Great.
Good luck with your new toter. Anyone else have their hand up? City manager, I don't see anybody. Okay, um I too want to uh say thank you to Cassandra Schreff uh for the presentation and uh getting us to the position where we are with this app. Uh I was able to use it and follow your instructions while we were um having the presentation. Uh and it worked just like you said, so really appreciate it and looking forward to all of us spreading the word. Okay. Onto uh agenda item six, consent agenda. At this time, is there any item any alderman wishes to have removed, who don't know or provide further comment? Alderman Brennan.
Six point ten and six point two two.
Alderman Brennan, your hand is still up. Is that on purpose? I'm going to put in a service request that you take it down. Anyone else have uh their hand up for uh consent agenda items to be removed? Seeing none, I'm going to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Minus item six point one zero and six point two two. Motion by Alderman Mulliner, second by Alderman Kennedy, clerk Tamer.
Cahill?
Aye.
Tulluto?
Aye.
Hark?
Sorry about that. Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Mulliner? Deuter?
Aye.
Remus? Hill?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Palmski?
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays. Motion carries consent agenda minus items six point one zero and six point two two is approved. Onto agenda uh agenda item six point one zero. This is a report out of Public Works. I'd ask clerk Tamer to read the recommendation.
It is therefore the recommendation of the Public Works and Building Committee that the city billing rates for thirty-five, sixty-five, and ninety-five gallon container service refuse stickers and yardway stickers be adjusted annually as indicated above and on the attached spreadsheet for the contract period of April first, twenty twenty-one to April thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. And April first, twenty twenty-two to March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Signed Jim Kennedy Chair, Mike Brennan Vice Chair, Alderman Brian P. Cahill, and Jacob Hill.
Okay, to put this before council, I'll ask for a motion to approve the report and recommendation as read. Motion by Alderman Kennedy, second by Alderman Brennan. Alderman Kennedy, your report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will defer to Alderman Bram who pulled the report.
Alderman Bram, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um I have a question in regards to the path that we've been going down for uh refuse rates in the the past years. I don't believe that continuing the uh high cost per gallon for the smaller toters relative to the larger toters is something that's an appropriate path and something that goes against our sustainability plan. And what we try to encourage our residents to do, which is to recycle more and throw out less uh waste. Therefore, I won't be supporting this report.
Any additional comments? Alderman Brennan.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh the rates we we've negotiated with the Republic Republic vary toter and are passed on to the resident. Uh there's also operational costs incurred by the city to support this service, and I believe the cost should be distributed equally to all users regardless of toter size. Uh I for myself, I've had a ninety-five gallon toter for the past twenty-two years. And as you just found out, I need a new one. They're very durable, evidently. And um, you know, because I have a I have a ninety-five uh gallon toter, because five times a year I need it. You know, the rest of the time, there it's no more than half full, uh especially now that my four kids are off to college. Just because I have a ninety-five gallon toter doesn't mean I'm unsupportive to sustain sustainability. I strongly believe in sustainability, and I'm willing to pay for the convenience five times a year. I need ninety-five gallons of capacity. The larger toter 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 also enables me to put the toter on the curb without worrying about my garbage blowing into the street, or worse, my neighbor's front yard. Uh this is my rationale for supporting tonight's report. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Seeing none, I'm going to ask for clerk Tamer to call the vote.
Cahill?
Aye.
Tulluto?
Aye.
Hark?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Mulliner? Deuter?
Aye.
Remus?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Graham?
No.
Palmski?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, one nay.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays. Motion carries gen item six point one zero is approved. Onto a gen item six point two two. This is an ordinance. I'd ask clerk Tamer to read the ordinance.
An ordinance extending temporary executive powers pursuant to section three point one six of Elmer's Municipal Code in pursuant to sixty-five ILCS five forward slash eleven dash one dash six.
To put this before council, I'll ask for a motion to approve the ordinance as read. Motion by Alderman Mulliner, second by Alderman Levin, Alderman Mulliner.
Uh this is just a continuation to give you a continued authority as long as we're under this pandemic uh executive order. Uh I still believe that it's a necessity because we don't know what's going to happen from one day to the next right now.
Anyone else? Alderman Bram.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh as I expressed in the past, the executive order powers have not been utilized since last October. We have processes in place, even if there was something to accelerate um any policymaking decisions that we utilize on a frequent basis. So even if there was something along the lines of needing something close to immediate, we can call special sessions. We can pass the report and ordinance or resolution the same night. Um and evidence of the uh fact that there is no need for this at this time. We are at the lowest rates, I believe, um since the pandemic has started. And um therefore, I won't be supporting this. Thank you.
Any additional comments? Alderman Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um while we are
While we are making significant progress in the pandemic, we're nowhere near being through it. I think these powers need to be in place because things have changed very rapidly and could change again, as Alderman Mulliner stated. So I think until the governor says we're out of the woods and we're no longer under his pandemic decree, I believe we should continue to have these at our disposal. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll ask Clerk Tamer to call the vote.
Cahill?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Hark?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Veremis?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Bram?
Oh.
Palmski?
Aye.
13 ayes, one nay.
13 ayes, one nay, motion carries. Agenda item 6.22 is approved. Under reports and recommendations of appointed and elected officials, 7.1. Mayor Morley, that's me. A couple of things. First and foremost, last Friday, the city was presented with an opportunity to schedule appointments for COVID-19 vaccinations. The registration was to be opened the next day, which was just last Saturday, to Elmhurst residents ages 65 years and older. Vaccines will be administered this March 5th, that's this Friday, right? Friday? Yeah. And are available by appointment only and limited to 950 residents who meet the 1B category requirements. So I know the city manager worked overtime along with the staff to set up a call center for Saturday, which was to open at 10:00 a.m. Appointments being taken by staff and volunteers. We set up an 800 number that would be routed to city hall. At 10:00 a.m. this last Saturday, our COVID-19 vaccine call center was open, and much to our chagrin, the system was immediately overwhelmed with over 65,000 phone calls. It appeared that either a robot calling system or a redialing system had crashed the phone line. And due to this high demand, the system would not allow for any of these calls to come through to our call takers. So we got together, quickly mobilized, and figured out our plan B to do what we ultimately wanted to do, which was take advantage of the fact that we had gotten access to these vaccines and make sure that we sign people up. The good news is that our system did capture the phone numbers of people trying to call in, but we had to sift through 65,000 in the first 20 minutes, over 120,000 in the first hour. But we did have the ability to de-dupe the list, and we ended up with about 1,100 phone numbers. Our staff and volunteers were then assigned a list of the phone numbers to call and schedule appointments. So instead of taking them in, we were reaching out. The phone numbers were prioritized in the order that they were received. We were able to track that information when it was coming in. This went on all day and into the evening, and when the list was exhausted, over 700 people were registered. Staff came back on Sunday morning to fill the remaining 150 spots by calling back phone numbers who we could not reach on Saturday. We do apologize for the failure in technology was caused this problem, but I am so appreciative of the following people who helped get 950 seniors registered for the COVID vaccine. Specifically, I want to thank Emily Wagner, Cassandra Schreff, Matt Schreff, Rianne White, Erin Jason, Amanda Malone, Annie Bertles, Chris Johnson, Maricela Cruz, Stoyana, I know Stoyana, Ivan Sevich, close enough. Stoyana, you know who you are. Our fire departments, both red and black shifts, Kathy Jordan, Chris White, Chris Hanson, Adam Apostolovich, again, Adam knows who he is, Grace Clear, Julie Lundgren, Gail and David Anderson, Noel Toledo, and if there's anybody on this I missed, I apologize, but thank you all. Ultimately, we got through it, and we got every single available vaccine that we had assigned. City of Elmhurst is also thankful to DuPage County Board Member Pete DiCiani, Julen Osco, IDPH, and the great Ray Graham Association for the opportunity to coordinate this vaccine clinic. If you haven't received a vaccine and would like to, I remind you that you can go to dupagehealth.org to receive a COVID vaccine appointment through DuPage County. That's not the ones that we signed up, but you can still register with DuPage County. And more vaccines are coming online every day. The new Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine was approved, and I know the DuPage County Health Department is preparing for that. The best place you can go for update information is the DuPage County Health website. We have links and information on our website as well. So I want to thank everybody involved. There's a little bit of light at the end of the tunnel as it relates to this COVID pandemic. I will remind everybody, not only in council chambers tonight, but anybody who is watching this live or later watching this, that although we are coming out of this pandemic, a lot of folks are still struggling, and that includes some of our businesses. So I really, really urge you to shop local as we come out of this. Our local businesses could use all of the help that they can get. And that's it for me. Thank you very much. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to express my appreciation to those staff members and volunteers who came in and talking to them today. They said it was one of the most gratifying days of working at the city to hear people and how grateful they were that we were able to get them registered. And there was one name missing off that list, and that was Mayor Steve Morley, who did spend a couple of hours here Saturday, not only ready to answer phones, but helping us troubleshoot everything. So I appreciate his leadership on that as well. Thanks.
Thank you, Jim. Anyone else? Reports and recommendations? Seeing none, I will go on to other business. Do we have any other business? I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderman Brennan, second by Alderman Mulliner. Clerk Tamer asks you to call the vote.
Cahill?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Hark?
Aye.
Levin? Kennedy?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Veremis?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Bram?
Aye.
Palmski?
Aye.
14 ayes, zero nays.
14 ayes, zero nays, motion carries. We are adjourned, everybody. Thank you and have a great week.